This time we go down to staff report with Dr. Porter.
Thank you. The Port Arthur ISD has had a strong beginning. Our employees are coming to work, and I tell you, which we do not take for granted. That is something huge. And our students are coming to school, which we also do not take for granted. Challenges have come from both broken pipes across the city that have caused low water pressure, specifically affecting Thomas Jefferson Middle School campus. I would like to recognize the Port Arthur ISD's maintenance and custodial staff, especially plumbers and custodians, and the Water Department for the City of Port Arthur. These ladies and gentlemen have been on site and supporting the campus as we welcome back over eight hundred fifty students. Due to the low water pressure, the campus was closed on Monday, August twenty fourth. But with a great deal of thinking and coordination, we were able to return to school on Tuesday, August twenty fifth. The principal, Dr. Lewis, along with staff and students worked tirelessly together in order to keep the campus moving and the delivery of instruction to students maximized, which has been incredible. We still don't know the the origin or when we will have relief of the low water pressure. But I will say Thomas Jefferson has done an amazing job at keeping the students. The the restrooms on the second floor are closed, but they are working. We worked the plan out. We have people that are working custodial custodial services and the the plumbers are there all day long. We have people monitoring those restrooms, and it really has, it's it's been great. So kudos to that school and across the area. We know is low water pressure, so we're hoping we're not affected. And we support the Port Arthur City in trying to get us back up to normal. With that said, on tomorrow night at the game, we still have the same problem, the stadium. So the restrooms and the press box will be closed, and we will have restrooms on the first floor that are working. So we really have to monitor that. We have people that will be on duty monitoring and making sure that people are able to use some type of restrooms. But it is, it's been quite a feat trying to get. You you have over nine hundred people and making sure they have restroom facilities to use during the day. You know cafeteria have to, our child nutrition has to cook. We brought in water. But I'm telling you, the staff and the students have been remarkably cooperative. They really have. So thank you for them. I will ask Mrs. Adrian La to continue and give some of the highlights that has happened in our district recently.
This is for the time period since we last met, which would be from July twenty eighth through August twenty fourth. We had our annual convocation, and we did our vendors marketplace a little different this year. We had two different identical lane displays that allowed us to service twice as many of our employees in the in the less amount of time. And we had over a dozen vendors in each lane for the marketplace. And everyone who participated gave door prizes and several big door prizes. We had two flat screen TVs. We had two what I call tailgating wagons. So the convocation and the marketplace was a huge success. On Friday, the high school is having their first pep rally, and we have invited the media. And we have also invited the school board to attend, and that will be at one thirty in the boys' gym on tomorrow. And also, our executive team is also invited. The pep rally is closed to the public, however, for safety reasons. For August, we had our big welcome back to school. We solicited the public to send in their first day of school photos, and we received over a hundred photos of from parents of their children for the first day of school, and we posted those throughout the day. And those that we received after the deadline, we posted as a throwback Thursday on that first week of school so that all of the children were recognized on the timeline in their first day of school outfits. We also celebrated Stand Up To Cancer on Friday, the eighteenth, and employees wore orange. So here are some group pictures of a couple of campuses who sent in the photos of them in their orange. We had some startup school safety suggestions for the community. These were not requirements, but they were safety suggestions on how to safely take back to school photos that you are posting on social media and how to safely identify your children's belongings, especially if they are walking to school and maybe walking alone and not walking in a group. Because we don't want them to be easily identified to people who may want to cause them harm by calling them out by their first name because they see it on the jacket or the backpack. Our senior sunrise was a success. The class of twenty twenty four is calling this their Mamba Year in honor of Kobe Bryant, which today is Kobe Bryant Day, and some of the elementary campuses have been sporting their Laker gear for Kobe Bryant Day. Project Graduation is currently selling both class and spirit shirts. And the marching heat marching band is also, they have an online store where they are also selling Titan gear. And all of those are fundraisers for those respective organizations. During our professional development days, there was a Titan Technology Day that was organized and executed by Mr. Dagree. And the school district is offering twenty five dollars insurance policy for the Chromebooks. We have put this out to parents in English and in Spanish, and we're encouraging parents to take advantage of this opportunity to insure their child's device for only twenty five dollars because that is better than fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars in repair costs or replacement costs. And the deadline to purchase the insurance is September fifteenth. So we will continue to repost these flyers, encouraging our parents to take advantage of this insurance opportunity. Our Titan Athletics, we are in volleyball season today, tomorrow, and Saturday. Our volleyball girls are at C E King for a tournament. And then today, our freshman and JV football teams are facing Port Nature's Groves. And tomorrow, we have our opener with our varsity Titans versus Indians. Today, we released the premiere of our twenty twenty three football promo video that was produced by our media team. And we went to the field house when the varsity team class started a little bit after one o'clock. So the the guys were excited to see themselves on the screen in this in this like a little, they call it the Titan hype video. On on Fridays, we are going to start doing new job post alerts every week from Human Resources that will highlight the different openings that we have, different positions that we're hiring for. So this is the template for that particular announcement that will go on our social media platforms. And we have also put out the new House Bill one fourteen that's basically stating the, it describes the stipulation, the situation, if you are caught with any type of e-cigarettes, vapes, or what have you, that's automatic D A E P placement. And we put those warnings out in both English and in Spanish. As far as community engagement, we've had several fitness training facilities who are offering deals to employees. And we, and they're also encouraging the community, not just the P I S D employees, but the community as well, to join these places for different types of exercise classes or workout regimens. We also received clear backpack donations from Town and Country Ford that was donated to our secondary campuses on last Friday, and that was an initiative from our mayor and our board president. And the Town and Country Ford representative with the blue shirt on the picture, he was very happy to meet everyone and and volunteered to continue to lend his support to the school district. We are supporting the Mexican Heritage Society. This is the ad that we're placing in their souvenir ad booklet and as we prepare to celebrate Mexican Heritage Month, which will be from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. We have taken a lot of losses, so we have acknowledged past and present P I S D family members who have transitioned. One of those was one of our students at Sam Houston Elementary, and one of those was one of our bus drivers from the Transportation Department. And then three of them were retired P I S D educators. As far as our social media, from July twenty eighth to today, we've had twenty three newspaper article articles published that mentioned or featured our district. We've had eleven television news stories. Our media team has produced six videos. Our Facebook timeline has reached over one hundred and ninety four thousand people. Our Instagram account has reached four point two thousand, and our YouTube channel has reached one point four video views. We have had seven crisis communications and all calls. Two of those were all calls, and seven were specific to, I'm sorry, and five of those were specific to campuses. Our most popular posts and videos for that timeframe was the safety suggestion for labeling the backpacks and jackets that reached twenty eight point nine thousand. Our remembrance post for our student from Sam Houston Bailey Marks reached twenty four point four viewers and had two thousand reactions, four hundred and thirty eight comments. And then when we posted our new bus routes for the school year, that reached over twenty thousand. As far as video clips, our volleyball video clip from the Lady Titans versus the Sabine Pass Sharks had over five thousand views and reached sixteen point two thousand people. And then we also posted when they introduced the varsity team at that particular game, and that video was viewed three point seven thousand times. And that concludes my report.
We have one question, Dr. Questions, so Mr. Getwood.
I, it's not a question, it's more so like a, just a creative idea I just thought about. I love exactly what you're doing with the promoting the insurance on the Chromebooks. I think it'd be kind of cool that we could get some, like a few of the students to probably kind of like commercialize or advertise that, come like like a little skit or something, just so they can get like a visual visualization to see. Because I know, of course, we have the words, and of course, we know everybody doesn't read nowadays. So I think it'd be kind of cool to implement that factor, get the students involved, community involved, as well as highlighting and also educating them on this this initiatives that we have now. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. La, and I will say, Mrs. La and the media team are doing an exceptional job at promoting our district and putting us in good light. As we move forward, safe schools promote the protection of all students from violence, exposure to weapons and thefts, threats, bullying and harassment, the sale and use of illegal substance on school grounds and other emergencies as well. Moreover, students who feel comfortable and safe in their school environment are more likely to attend school regularly and be engaged in their studies. The Texas Education Code requires school districts to conduct safety and security audits of their facilities at least once every three years and to report the results to the Texas School Safety Center. The current three-year safety and security audit cycle for K twelve school districts began on November first, twenty twenty, and will end August thirty first, twenty twenty three. The reporting period for submitting audits audit results to the T X S S C during this audit cycle is April fourteenth through September fifteenth. Dr. Getwood oversees safety and security in our district and will now deliver a report on the audit of school district facilities. Dr. Getwood.
Thank you very much, Dr. Porter. And good afternoon, evening to the Board President, Barti, and members of the Board of Trustees. The Texas Education Agency requires school districts to facilities to undergo an audit, as Dr. Porter indicated, on a three-year cycle. The twenty twenty three audit of P I S D facilities was conducted in November, twenty twenty two and March, twenty twenty three. The district audit of facilities was provided by Crocs Technology and Security Solutions, excuse me, an independent professional auditing group to meet the reporting requirements of the Texas School Safety Center. And in accordance with the Texas Education Code thirty seven point one oh eight, the safety and security audit included physical security observations gathered by visiting facility, by visiting facilities and an examination of the district's emergency operations plan. The physical security and technology system assessed during the visits are as follows. Emergency operations, basically, how do you handle emergencies? What do you do to deal with emergencies? And do you have a plan, and is it laid out? That's what the emergency operation piece is. Then the management of staff and students, they looked at the school climate culture to a degree, but not to an extent where they could give us a report on the school culture and climate. They just made physical observations and eye observations of what was happening on the campuses. The other fencing and gates, they looked at the fencing and gates. And as you know, that in the recent legislation, the governor has indicated that we want certain areas fenced in, certain kinds of gates. And for the most part, P I S D is well ahead of that. We have fencing, we have gates, but we'll have to look at some other information. They're talking about the scalable kinds of things, so we will, we're working on that. But I would say the audit said we're in good shape at this juncture with our fencing and gates. And of course, directional and wayfinding signage, that's just giving information about prohibited weapons on campus, no drugs on campus, those kind of signs should be up on our campuses. And we're working to ensure that all of those signs are in place. You have time to get these things done, but we are somewhat ahead of the game because we had already begun to work with the signage. Traffic control and parking, we work with traffic control. Our biggest area is the high school, and the Assistant Chief and Chief work that. And then they will also spend some time at the Thomas Jefferson Campus working with traffic. And we have some traffic concerns at the elementary campuses as well. But we've been fortunate this year to also hire more crossing guards than we we have in the past. Then it comes to building exterior. When they're talking about building exterior, the main thing that they're talking about is trying to gain access to the building using exterior doors. And we have passed that with pretty good, with a pretty good rating from this audited group and from the state audited group. Because they they have come out, matter of fact, this past year, many of our facilities were ordered for state intrusion detection detection audit by the state. And we were able to, I will, please, I'm pleased to tell you that they were not able to gain access to any of our buildings through exterior doors. Then you have to talk about electronic access control. All of you are familiar with the access control. When you approach one of our buildings, there is a an access control button, and you have to press that button, and we can communicate with you before you gain access to the building. So we're a step ahead of that, we're a step ahead on that situation, too. And the visitor management system, you have to be able to have visitors, if they come to the building, to present an I D, we send it through the Raptor system, and we've had that in place for a number of years. The building interior, they're looking to ensure the doors are locked, closed. We have to make sure all of our classroom doors are locked and closed, even if they are unoccupied classrooms. That is one of the requirements. Then the videos, video surveillance, we pass that test because what they want is the video pointing to the single access access entrance of the building if we allow visitors in. So when you talk about the the access control, you're actually talking about visitors and letting them in through one set of doors. When you talk, and then the intrusion detection and monitoring, we've talked about that and told you what that was. The communication systems, they looked at the communication systems that we have in existence in the district. And there are some things that we can enhance, but there was nothing we failed in in that particular matter. So a review of the district's multi-hazard emergency operations plan by the auditors revealed that the district's E O P is currently meeting required standards. The overall audit of campuses and facilities was very good. The district is currently implementing the safety and security measures as set forth by T E A and recent legislation. Dr. Porter, that concludes the report on the safety and audit, the safety and security audit of the facilities.
Thank you. Armed security officer requirement in House Bill three. Almost a year after Texas's deadliest school shootings, state lawmakers ordered school districts to secure schools with armed officers and to train more staff to identify students who may need mental health support under legislation set to become law on Friday, September first, twenty twenty three. The presence alone of armed security can help deter violent crime altogether. If a person of threat is considering targeting a school and sees that armed guards or security cameras are there, they can be deterred from entering this location and may think twice before approaching the school campus. The purpose of an armed security guard is to protect, secure, and safeguard staff and students by monitoring for outside threats and identifying, reporting, and containing threats, provide first response and immediate intervention to emergency or crisis situations. The new enacted Texas Education Code, section thirty seven point zero eight one four, requires each school board to determine the appropriate number of armed security officers for each district campus. And absent, in absent of good cause exception, ensure at least one armed security officer, specifically a commissioned peace officer, is present during regular school hours at each campus. A school board can claim a good cause exception to this requirement due to lack of funding or qualified personnel. If the board claims a good cause exception, the board must provide an alternative standard that may include reliance on a school marshal or an employee or contracted individual who has completed the handgun safety course required for handgun license holders and is authorized to carry firearms by the district. At this time, I will ask Chief Base and Assistant Chief Wilson to come and explain the specifics of House Bill three, Texas Education Code thirty seven point zero eight one four.
Good afternoon, everybody. How y'all doing? Assistant Chief Wilson will pass you all out some communication in regards to House Bill three so you can get a layman's terms, in layman's terms, so you get a better understanding of it. Good afternoon, Ms. Carrier. Good afternoon, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, Ms. Ambrose. Good afternoon, Ms. Johnson. Good afternoon, Mr. Barti. Good afternoon, Dr. Porter. Good afternoon, Mr. Lofton. Good afternoon, Mr. Getwood. Good afternoon, Mr. Nossis. Good afternoon, Ms. Dean. Good afternoon, Brother Getwood. And good afternoon, Ms. Davis. Good afternoon, Ms. Dr. Brown. Good afternoon, Ms. All right. I'm gonna get straight to the point. I'm gonna touch on some things, and this is basically what what the school districts must comply with for House Bill three. I would advise you all to discuss the particulars on whatever you want to go with in your district in executive session. We don't want the public to know exactly who who you all will have armed on your campuses. Okay, for security reasons, I'd advise that. Okay. Okay, effective September first, twenty twenty three, Texas Education Code, Education Code, section thirty seven point oh eight one four. This new law requires school boards to determine the appropriate number of armed security officers for each district campus to ensure that at least one armed security officer is present during the regular school hours at each campus. A school board can claim a good cause exception to this requirement if they find that there is a lack of funding to fulfill the requirement or if they find that they cannot locate qualified personnel to fulfill the requirement only by filing a good cause exception claim in regards to this requirement. Okay. Number two, there are only three options for employing security personnel. A, a school district peace officer who is commissioned through T code and who is employed by the school district own police department. That's what you all have right now. You have your own police department, and you have police officers employed by your police department. Okay, B, a commissioned peace officer through T code who is an employee of the school district. You can actually hire a peace officer who is up to date on his training through T code to be security on your campuses as well, as an employee. C, a school resource officer, S R O, who is commissioned through T code, employed with an outside agency such as Port Arthur, the Sheriff's Department, like that. Employed with an outside agency and has a memorandum of understanding between the outside agency and the schools, school district, which allows an officer to work off duty on a school campus. We have such an M O U currently with Port Arthur Police Department. Chief Durso, he provides his officers the opportunity to work off duty on our campuses. And I appreciate that, Chief. Appreciate you, man. Thanks to me. Okay. House Bill three adds that a school district that enters into an M O U for S R Os may seek funding from federal, state, and private sources to support the cost of providing S R Os. This is not a cheap endeavor, y'all. It's gonna be costly. It's gonna be costly, okay? So I'm gonna repeat that again. House Bill three adds that a school district that enters into an M O U for S R Os may seek funding from federal, state, and private sources to support the cost of providing these S R Os. Let's go to the next page. Okay, if you do not have an officer to fulfill those requirements on page one, under A, B, or C, there is on page two, alternative standards for districts that claim a good cause exception. All right, number one, contracting with the school marshal. A school marshal has to have eighty hours of training by a T code licensed handgun instructor. A school marshal must hold a concealed handgun license permit. The district must first sponsor the person it's sending through the marshal program. Contact person is Ms. Katie Shrank, school marshal coordinator, and I have her information listed there in Austin, Texas. I have her phone number. You can call her direct. She can give you any kind of information regarding school marshal information that you may need. Ask her any kind of questions, she'll be able to answer it for you. Okay, number two, sponsoring a school guardian. A person who is an employee of the district and has undergone sixteen hours of training by a licensed certified handgun instructor who has been certified in school safety. Let me repeat this. This is sixteen hours of training by a licensed certified handgun instructor, not just a handgun instructor. That handgun instructor must, must be certified in school safety as well. He can't just teach you tactics on how to shoot and just cut you loose in a school. That's that's not the way to do it. He has to be certified in school safety. And also, the school guardian person must hold a concealed handgun license permit as well. All right. And like I said earlier, I highly recommend that the discussions held in regards to which type of security service a district chooses to obtain be discussed in closed session with the attorney representing that school district. A good cause exception form is included with this information. So I do, I did provide you all with a good cause exception form. And it is attached, page three is your form. Y'all can go through this form with your attorney. Let your attorney advise you on which direction you want to go in your district. Okay? And I've worked with Ms. Carrier for years. I call her Melody. But I've worked with her for years, and and she's a hard worker, she's a go-getter, and I know she gonna point y'all in the right direction. I know she will. Okay, that's that form. Now, the following pages are is information, more detailed information on what it'll take to become a guardian if you go through the guardian program, and what it'll take to become a marshal if y'all decide to go that route. Okay? Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Lofton.
Okay, thank you, Chief Base.
You're welcome, brother.
What if we have a teacher that already has her, his or her concealed handgun license? Where can they obtain the school safety training from?
They will have to contact D P S. Department of Public Safety. That Department of Public Safety person will point you in the right direction on what further training that teacher needs.
Okay. And do they, and they would have to just notify the district? That they've taken the school si, school safety training?
Yes, and they will receive a certificate, and it will go into a database to where they keep track of everybody who has completed the training and who has been certified.
So Doc, why we just don't get all our teachers and just offer a class for all our teachers?
Well, let me say this, I think, uh-
Oh, that's right, we can discuss that right there.
We have a question, uh, about Ms. Ambrose.
Go ahead, Ms. Ambrose.
Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation, but let's go back a little bit. You said that this is something we should discuss in, in closed session because no one should know who these people are.
I wouldn't recommend that-
Well, let me ask this question. So it's okay if they know you're carrying a weapon or Port Arthur Police is carrying a weapon, but they can't know that anyone else is carrying a weapon?
I wouldn't recommend it, ma'am.
Why not?
I, I just think that's something the school should, and your, your executive board should be aware of who's carrying weapons on your campus. I don't think the public should know who's carrying weapons on camp, concealed weapons on campus.
I thi, I think a good scenario would be, because if we were to discuss this right now, let's say we do an option where we have a teacher, we discuss that teacher, someone who's gonna shoot a school up is gonna come in and look for that teacher. So we don't want them to know exactly, you know, which route we're gonna take, if I'm correct.
You're correct, you are correct.
So we, we definitely want it to be something that we, you know, discuss, so if they do come, they won't know who to look for.
Assistant Chief Wilson, he'll elaborate.
The marshal program is not a new program, that's been existed since about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The whole purpose of the marshal pr, program originally was to have armed personnel in your school without nobody knowing.
Yeah.
The armed marshal is, most times concealed. They have a gun on.
Okay.
But it's, it's concealed.
Okay.
Now, if a parent requests, do you have any marshal in your school? You have to let them know how many you have in your school.
That's kind of what I'm skipping.
But request.
Okay.
But we don't have to tell them who.
But you don't have-
We don't have to tell them who. Just how many?
You don't want to, right, good, you may decide you want X number, but you don't want the public to know you have X number. Yes, ma'am.
So it's essentially like how the, the marshals are like on the airlines, when you have someone, but you just don't know who.
Program started out.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, you will have somebody armed, but you don't want people to know exactly who it is.
Any other trust, uh, questions for trustees?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, y'all, y'all, y'all rely on, on Ms. Melody now, she gonna point y'all in the right direction. All right, y'all, I appreciate y'all's time. All right, ma'am, thank you so much. All right, I appreciate you. That means a lot, thank you.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our reports, our staff reports on those two.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Porter, for your staff reports. Minutes. Consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustee meeting. You have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse, second by Vice President Lofton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consider agenda. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the president, board president, per policy, be local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I'm gonna give you a minute to look through consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I just have one question, uh, backing up, under the minutes is the other items that we supposed to vote on individually. I don't know if you want to do that now or if you're gonna do that after consent agenda.
Turn back, oh, okay, I, I see, okay, I see, I got you, I got you, I didn't, I missed it.
And each one of them are done individually.
Okay, let's go put, yes, Dr. Porter?
Um, okay.
I missed it.
Okay, that's fine. I think we're asking for the consideration and the adoption of the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three budget. We'll do each six, um, the six items separately. Propo budget twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee-
Second.
Brown, second by Vice President Lofton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, Dr. Porter.
Trustees, we're asking you to consider and approve the interest and sinking fund tax rate of zero point five zero 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 per one hundred dollars. Okay, the defeasance, I'm on the wrong one, get the defeasance, yes. Defeasance first, I'm sorry.
Order, order authorizing the defeasance and redemption of certain outstanding.
Yeah, I got the right one, do I have it? I just, I was looking at the one I had to reach out, okay? Uh, we are asking approval for the order authorizing the defeasance and redemption of certain outstanding bonds and containing other matters related thereto.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We are asking for approval, the interest and sinking fund tax rate of zero point five zero 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 per one hundred dollar of taxable value for the twenty twenty-three appraisal roll.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown and second by Vice President Lofton, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We're asking approval for the maintenance and operations tax rate of zero point eight two six three per one hundred dollar of taxable value for the twenty twenty-three appraisal roll.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown and second by trustee Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We're asking for approval, the tax rate ordinance setting the tax rate twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance pending, will you have it?
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown and second by Vice President Lofton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We're asking for approval, agreement for the purchase of attendance credit for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown and second by Secretary, uh, Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now, to consent agenda. Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go again. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the board president, per policy, be local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after items not required, separate discussion has been acted upon. At this time, trustees, I would give you a minute to look through consent agenda items. I'll just call for a motion of consent agenda item. Yes, sir.
I like to pull number nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Say nineteen?
Nineteen.
Twenty?
Twenty. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-six. And twenty-seven.
Can I get a motion to, uh, approve consent agenda items? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-eight.
So move.
Or second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Getwood and second by trustee, uh, Narcisse, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Narcisse.
Well, I don't know if we have to do them in order, but if not, I like to start out with number twenty-five first.
Well, we'll start, uh, with number twenty-five, uh, that's the one that you, if you don't, if you pull, let's go in order. Let's go with nineteen first, then we'll work our way to number twenty-five.
It's a little, it's a little bit different. Uh, if I may, do twenty-five first.
Okay. Yeah, go, yes.
I, I didn't hear.
Wanna go and consider the order that they're there, so let's go with nineteen first, then go to, work our way to twenty-five.
Okay, no problem. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table consent agenda item nineteen, twenty, twenty-six, and twenty-seven for further board review. Well, for one, I just, I-
Yes, well, we have a dis, discussion right now.
Oh, well, no, you had to have a second before you even have a discussion.
Okay, well, we have, we have it on table, I, I, we had a, uh-
I made the motion.
You made the motion, and Mr. Getwood seconded.
Oh, he did?
Yes.
I didn't, but I can second it.
I thought you seconded it, okay?
I didn't say anything.
Okay, well, you, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Narcisse, and he's gonna get a second for discussion. Okay, Mr. Getwood, you're gonna second it for discussion. Okay, Mr. Narcisse, now.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a discussion, I made the motion, he, he was asking a question.
Yeah, you got the-
I think, okay, so I think right now we're in discussion, so we just made a motion to discuss what-
I made a motion to table.
To table that item or not?
So the discussion is before the motion is-
There is no, there is no discussion.
Discussion.
We don't have to discuss it.
Okay, he's tabling the items, meaning that you're not discussing these today.
Right.
So if you're second, you, you've already made a second to a table motion, so the vote is, are, is this board wanting to table these items, or you, and if you don't want to table them, then you'll need another motion to consider and discuss, okay? So the only thing you're voting on right now is whether you want to table these items. You're not gonna discuss them, you're just gonna table them and put them on the next agenda. So everybody clear on what your, what the vote is?
So the vote at this point, at this time, will be for the table of these items.
Yes.
For further notice.
Yes.
Okay.
May I say one thing? Not to discuss the items. What I'm saying is, we have, uh, September one, if you would add that too, that we have a deadline.
Okay, so the, the motion, what's on the floor, is to table this item. So usually, you make a motion, you second it, you discuss it, and then someone says, let's table.
Right.
Okay, but right now, you've got a motion to table, period.
Okay, so we need to do, we need to, we need to vote on the table right now. Mr. LeBlanc, let's do a roll call on this, please. No. No.
No.
Mr. Ambrose?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
No. No.
Yes. Okay, we gotta move forward with the, um-
You still got to take him in.
We have, let's, we have a motion on that item. And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to discuss.
Well, no, you, your motion is, this exactly, it is consider and if appropriate, approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four student code of conduct. So that's the motion, that's a second.
Second.
Now you can discuss it, but it is an action item.
Got you.
It's just on nineteen.
Just on nineteen, just for nineteen, yes. Yes.
Is there any discussion?
In a, in a discussion before we vote on it. No discussion?
Well, I just wanna ask one question. I wanna, to my, to my colleagues, is that how could you all vote on something when you just received this tonight? So to me, it's considered that we just accepted something when we haven't even reviewed it. So that's why I was asking to table the item, so that way we can have a special call meeting, so that way we can view this further to see any amendments that may be needed to it, on behalf of the board trustees.
Dr. Vine, would you explain that the student code, I think nineteen-
Now, one, one, oh, one, one second, now, one of them is no board action, but that doesn't mean that the board cannot review it. According to the policy F N.
The student code of conduct is the same as it has been, and there were some updates, updates from chapter eighty-eight, which you have clearly put in there, so if you would go over those for us, please.
Yes, sir, every time we have a legislative session, we end up with updates.
Correct.
Uh, many times, we end up with updates to the student code of conduct and the student handbook. And so what we do is we work with TASB and we utilize TASB's model to ensure that we're updating those books appropriately. And so we, what we did, um, really in support of the, uh, superintendents and the board's review, is we put a quick reference guide or document together summarizing those major legislative updates coming from the eighty-eighth legislative session. And we did that for the student handbook, and we also did that for the student code of conduct. So the document that you see as a cover sheet to the student code of conduct and the student handbook, that document is really a quick reference guide to those major changes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we go over this a few weeks back in, um, a retreat that we had covering the mandates from the, uh, legislative sessions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We, okay, I thought we had gone over that, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
We went over legislation, but we didn't go over some that they adopted.
You went over each adopted, enacted sixty-seven, we went over each one, which includes what is the changes in our student code of conduct, which is the same thing, all we've done is added what was changed. And we've gone over that with Attorney, uh, Allen, and you have it again.
But just the legislative session.
The legislative session, which wasn't, which wasn't- We have not changed anything, but was changed, and Dr. Vine has given you, what, let's, let's call it a cheat sheet that you cannot, so you can see what was changed in that document. Not the entire document, but what was changed due to the eighty-eighth legislative session. It is a one-pager that you can review.
Okay, I'll just call for a vote. Uh, for, do we have any discussion before we go to a vote on this?
You've already had discussion.
We already have discussion, yeah, okay, we finish here.
Unless there, you can say, is there any more discussion?
Any more discussion, yeah.
Or someone can call for the vote.
I, I-
Need to call for a vote.
I just have one thing to say. I, I think what he's saying is, if we can, is there any way we can be able to get this before the meeting, I think that's, is that what he's saying?
Oh, no, that's not what he's saying.
No, we've got a call, you want to call for a-
You got a motion. You can, you can call for the vote.
I need to call for a vote. Okay, we got a call for, uh, vote, we got a roll call vote on this, Mrs. LeBlanc. Nineteen, yes, for nineteen, what we just went over.
It is just for nineteen.
Just for nineteen.
Yes.
This is just for nineteen. No, 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 this for nineteen twenty.
No, just one, we gotta go through each one.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Let the reflect that, uh, motion pass. Consider if an appropriate approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student handbook, getting the motion? And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, you have a discussion?
Discussion.
What is this discussion on, Tom?
Twenty.
On twenty, consent agenda item of twenty.
The student handbook.
Student handbook.
Same, the next book, same thing.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry.
You pulled them, this, this your-
I pulled it all together, but since we voted on them individually, then the, the question was the same for all of them.
Just ask for any more discussion.
There's really no discussion on that.
So there's no discussion?
Just for clarification, the only thing that was updated to this, to all of these documents was only the House bill that was just enacted, correct? That's the only thing.
That's correct, the board has to approve the student code of conduct annually, and anything that's changed is changed as a result of what was changed through a legislative session. None of the other elements of the book changed, only those things that changed as a result of new laws.
So we, we still have to call for the vote.
We still have to call a vote. Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Considering item number twenty, uh.
Six.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
We will pull.
We will pull twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
No, he's pulling.
No, he's pulling number twenty-five? Yes, sir. And, uh, considering the item number twenty-six, kind of the motion? A second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Mrs. LeBlanc?
Uh, uh, Mr. President, which one are we on?
We're at number twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six, oh, okay, twenty-six, okay.
Mr. LeBlanc, roll call vote, please. Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion for considering the item number twenty-seven? I have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, and a second by Vice President Lofton. Do we have discussion of this item? Mrs. LeBlanc, roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 First, the Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll go down to, uh, personnel, and then after personnel, we will go into the trustee agenda request. Dr. Porter?
I've given you the list of teachers for consideration.
Consider if appropriate approve employment of teachers, have a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Getwood, second by trustee Narcis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter?
I am asking for your approval for the employment of English Language Arts Supervisor, Mrs. Karen Kennedy Moore.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcis, second by Secretary Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter?
I am asking for your approval for the employment of Port Arthur ISD Chief of Police, Mr. Howard Sylve III.
Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by Vice President Lofton. All in favor, say aye.
Second, uh, Mr. President, can you do a roll call vote on that one?
Roll call vote? Mrs., uh, LeBlanc, let's do a roll call vote, please. Yes.
Uh, oh, yes, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Just name it, no.
Let, let it show that, uh, the ayes have it, and, uh, motion has passed.
Okay.
Okay, let's go down to, uh, we're gonna move back up to trustee agenda. Uh, we have, uh, some items on the, on the agenda by trustee Jacory Narcis. Mr. Narcis?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to consider and approve, and if appropriate, to take action to amend BED local.
We have a motion on the floor, uh, can I get a second? We have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcis, second by trustee Getwood. Discussion?
Well, uh, board of trustees, you all have been given, uh, the document of the revisions to that, uh, local policy. I don't know if you all had a chance to read it, so if you have questions, I'd be happy.
I think we have some, uh, they, they can, uh, we'll be probably fast out, look at it. This is if I want to look at it. I, I make that earlier. Uh, no, I, I just pulled it early. I think we do have some copies here.
But if not, it was emailed to all the board members.
Was this sent to us?
Yes, ma'am. Their email from.
This was sent, I'm sorry, I don't find that, this is.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Narcis, go ahead and continue on with, with the discussion of what, uh, you want on this, uh, considering the item.
Okay, so I'll read from the word document that I generated, and the board could always add input to it as well. A limit on participation, audience participation at a board meeting is allowed by members of the public who desires to address the board regarding a particular topic, public comment. At regular meetings, the board shall permit a public comment on topics of the speaker's choice. A person requesting to speak to the board shall not address the board on the same or similar topics more than once within three months. The request to speak under public comment must be made in writing on the form provided by the district to the board liaison, superintendent, or board president by noon on the day of the board meeting. As well as the form could be emailed, but is a blank there, so we could fill that in tonight. In case of a rescheduled regularly monthly meeting or special meeting, need not give prior notice of his or her intent to address the board, but shall be limited in his or her remarks to the topic or topics of the workshop or special meeting. No presentations shall exceed five minutes. Delegations of more than five persons may appoint one person to present their views before the board and would be given ten minutes. Foreign language speakers, persons addressing the board in a foreign language may be given ten minutes to speak if simultaneous equipment is unavailable. Board response, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board shall deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with the notice of the meeting. Complaints and concerns, the presiding office or designated shall determine whether a person addressing the board has attempted to resolve matters administratively through policy established resolution channels. If not, the person shall be referred to the appropriate policy seen listed below to seek resolution. Disruption, the board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. If, after at least one warning from the presiding officer, any person continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to remove the person from the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Narcis, I don't, I just see that you're reading this, uh, and you said about ten minutes, is that a change that you tried? Is that a change that you're trying to make?
The ten, the ten minutes is for those who have a foreign language speaker.
No, you, you put ten minutes on.
On the other one, too.
Yeah, you put ten minutes on both.
You said five minutes on the first.
Five minutes and ten.
If it's more than five?
No, you change it from three to five, ten to five.
Right, for, if it's, if it's, uh, five or more persons, ten minutes. If it's someone who have a language barrier, ten minutes. All others, five minutes.
So that's a change that you want.
Right, well, I was just reading the top, I said, correct, along with allowing the public to make a comment on the topics of their choice and not what's currently, only on considering agenda or recurring agenda item.
But we can't act on any of it anyway.
No, 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 sir, we're not acting, but we could listen to.
Why would you not wanna hear? I don't wanna hear a bunch of gripes.
So you don't, you don't wanna hear your constituents concerned, the people that elected you to your seat?
You can't act on any of the gripes.
Okay, you cannot act on it within a meeting, but you could always put it on the agenda, so that way the board could deliberate or take an action on it.
Again, they have to, what's on the agenda.
What's on the?
Gripes on the agenda, but.
Okay.
Any parent that come off the street that say, I wanna gripe because, uh, the color of my child's shoes, he wore some flip-flop to school, and she come in and can get on the board, I'm gonna sit here and listen to five minutes of that? No.
Okay, but the only, the only thing that this board discussed, under the consent agenda item, are something of routine or recurring.
Yes.
Okay, and routine.
Same thing.
So, no, so that's, the only thing that we really discuss is policies here, board members, we don't discuss anything else. The board, the board members, the board members don't bring anything for board action other than what's under the consent agenda item.
What you wanna discuss?
For recurring or routine. It's a lot of stuff that the board could discuss.
Hold on, we have a question on the floor, uh.
Well, I wanna, I need to make a clarification. Your policy does not say that it's on the consent agenda. It says anything that's on the agenda, someone can address, so it doesn't have to be a consent agenda item.
Right, but majority of the stuff that's on the.
But, but that's not what your policy says, though. If there are items that we put on the agenda that are not consent, consent agenda items, we have like eight or nine tonight.
Right.
But there, but your policy does not say, and you keep saying that, does not say the consent agenda. It just says it has to be on the agenda.
Wants to hear the gripes.
No, well, I mean, our, the issue, the issue that this addresses is, you know, we had one person that would come every month and talk for five minutes, however it was, and he would never address anything on any agenda or anything concerning public business.
And this, this has been revised, and I'm looking at it in, in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, this was, this was, uh, recently revised.
And what, what revisions, what revisions were made?
Uh, the part about it has to be, the person has to speak about something that's on the agenda.
Okay.
And they can't come, you know, every month and talk about the same thing.
We have a question, uh, Mrs., uh, Johnson.
So let me just ask a quick question, 'cause I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So, you know, whether, whether, whether or not it's a gripe or not from someone that we're hearing, anything that a, that a person in the public or parent or whoever would like to discuss, they can still do that right now if they're, even if it's a gripe or not, if they go and get it on the agenda, correct?
Incorrect, incorrect.
So it's not, okay, see, that's what I'm trying to make clear, so you can't talk about just whatever you would like to talk about. Even if he requested to have it on the.
Correct.
So what, what constitutes what we can or can't talk about? I'm just asking so that I could be clear.
If it's on the agenda, as, uh, Mrs. Carrie said, if it is on the agenda, a parent can come and discuss it. It has to be an agenda, not just consent agenda, but anything on the agenda.
But that's only established just by us, it's not anything that anyone else can request.
So a parent can.
I, I can, I can give, I'll give a very, uh, uh, explanation to this. Uh, we changed this in twenty-twenty, and, and most of the people that's still, that's in this room was in this room and lived this situation as, as well as I did. I was in the presidency at the time, I think I was, uh, secretary at the time. We had an individual come in here, and he disrespected every person in this room, including the women in this room. And after that, we changed, because we had to, where anybody can come and speak to the board on anything. We can't take any action, we can't say anything, we can't question them, rather sit back and listen to their complaints. I'm not saying let's not listen to their complaints, but when you have individuals that's gonna come in and disrespect the staff, the superintendent, and the board members up here, it was an action that we needed to take, and that I felt that we did the right thing at that particular time for that, and since we did that, we have not went back and changed it, because we said, if anybody wanna come and speak, it has to be on the agenda. You just can't come up here and speak about anything, because I've noticed, and I'll, I'll be finished in a second. I noticed that they would bypass, I see Dr. Lewis in this, they would bypass going, have a meeting with Dr. Lewis to come directly to us, and have it went through the proper protocols in order to get their, uh, point across. They are, they will come directly to the board instead of going through the proper protocol to get things done. So we did put that in place for that, and we still can act on it even if we wanted to.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. President, I need to clarify something for Ms. Johnson. If a parent has a complaint and it's addressing your policy, it's GF.
Yes.
So that parent files, goes through the proper process, and it will be placed on your agenda.
And if it gets to number three.
Well, it's there, but it's, it's the parent's choice, you know? I mean, the district can't stop a grievance from coming to you, but at that point, those things are actually placed on your agenda, and you can act on it. The same thing with employee, employee grievances. Those things go through the process, 'cause if you, if you notice on the, on the, um, the policy, it says certain things you're not gonna be able to listen to anyway, even if you would allow them to do it, because they've not gone through the proper procedure. And that's why it says that the board president will direct them to the administrative process. Um, so there is a, there is an avenue for a parent or anyone. I mean, 'cause, 'cause complaints don't have to come from parents. We have policies for community complaints, uh, to come to this board in a proper, uh, venue where you actually can deliberate and make a decision about it.
I have a question.
Hold on, one, one second, trust me, but we, we, all I keep hearing, that we keep dwelling on is complaints. Other people have other things they'd like to discuss, to bring matters before the board. It does not have to do with a complaint, so.
And usually, those things are put, they get the permission from the superintendent, and he puts those things in his, in his report. We've had community people come. I think the ministers came a few, uh, months ago, um, and that was under the superintendent's report.
But that was at his discretion as well.
Well.
Is it on the agenda for, excuse?
There's, there's a motion.
Yeah, and, and also, board members, if you, if you recall, your policy says two of you can place something on the agenda. So if, if you know of a community person that wants to discuss something with the board, two of you can place it on the agenda.
At this time, let's call for, let's go, call, go ahead, Mr. Getwood, we're gonna call for a vote.
Okay, I just wanted to add to, I, I, I believe moving forward, that, well, the one thing we should do is, of course, 'cause this is the first time that, that we've had this conversation. I've been on the school board for three years. I joined the ward in twenty-twenty-one, and I didn't even know the, the process to getting somebody to put on the agenda for our public. I think we could do a better job of kind of informing them of that, 'cause I, I know that we, there are some people who probably don't wanna come and complain, but wanna share something, so I think maybe if we could put something out to let them know, hey, if you do have something you wanna say, you can get in contact with two trustees to have it put on the agenda if we're not gonna amend this, um, today. I mean, I do understand that we have had people in the past come and address the board. Um, I personally, I, I don't feel like we should let one person, um, you know, kind of shut everyone else out, 'cause there, there are some people who wanna come and share some good things, and we only have this opportunity as school board trustees to really do something, and I understand that when people come and address the board, that we're here to listen, we can't act on it. Um, but I do feel that moving forward, if we could put some information out, because a lot of our public are not up to date or educated on how about, how, how to go about these things. I didn't even know how to go about this, and I'm a school board trustee. So I think if we could do something, I don't know, what, we come up with something creative in the meantime, but, um, that, that was all I had to say on it.
Okay, let's call for a vote, we're gonna call for a vote. Mrs., uh, LeBlanc, we're gonna go to a roll call vote.
Talk about what?
No.
Well, we didn't, you didn't either, did you?
Yeah, we didn't.
Something we never talked about it.
Read your rules.
Well, that is the.
Lofton, we're calling for a vote.
Rules or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Call for a vote, call for a vote to mean or leave as, as.
Oh, no.
Well, it's the truth, you want me to sit up here and lie like?
Well, I've been here for three years, and it's never been brought up.
I'm not sure exactly why, so I wanna keep it like it is.
So, no.
So, no, okay, I'm just trying to make sure, 'cause it was something going on.
The motion is to, the motion is to amend your policy.
Amend the policy.
So a yay is to amend it, a no is to not.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Let the record, uh, reflect that the noes have it, and, uh, motion passes. Um, Mr. G, Mr. Narcis?
Motion fails.
Motion fails, motion fails, sorry, motion fails. Sorry about the long night. Mr. Narcis?
Yes, uh, the, the next item I've had is. It's to consider and if appropriate to take action to amend the notice agenda of regular meetings for the board of trustees to pretty much mirror what the Texas Association of School Boards have. That way, a lot of times when trustees have items, and if they're not worded right, it always gets placed on the agenda as a discussion item instead of us being able to take action. You know, instead of going back and forward, if the item is on the agenda, change of the notice to mirror what TASB have, it will allow the board to even take action on the item of, on the, that's on the agenda for discussion. That's pretty much to narrow it down.
No, that's not Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, so I, 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 I'll read to you the notice. The subjects to be discussed or considered or upon which any form of action may be taken are listed below as your agenda. Items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on this meeting notice. For more information about public comment, see policy BED, unless. Items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on this meeting notice, for more information about public comment, see policy B E D, unless removed from the consent agenda item, identified within the consent agenda will be acted on at one time.
First, let's, let's stop, because we need to take a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion and a second before we do discussing it, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Narciss, second by secretary, um, Johnson, Miss Narciss, Miss, uh, Miss Carrier.
Yeah, that, what you read is correct, but that does not do what you, what you think it does, uh, that's, that just says that anything on your agenda, then you can take action on, so that's something that the board wants to do, but that does not fix if you submit something for discussion that it's gonna be placed for action, okay? So if the board wants to have a policy where everything on your agenda is up for action, we can do that, and that's what that first sentence does, um, on the agenda, so that's, that's just a matter of preference, but it doesn't do anything with if a board member requests something to be discussed, um, you know, that it automatically does that unless that section is on your agenda. So if the board wants to put that on your agenda and you also include that everything on the agenda, if it's appropriate, you can go into executive session to discuss at any time in that meeting, so that's the way usually, um, you know, some, some school district, um, and city council, uh, postings or agendas read.
So, Mr. But discussion, uh, for more clarification, Mr. Narciss, you, what you're asking is that when you put something on the agenda as a trustee, you want it to be an action item?
Correct.
But it's, it's how you word it to be an action item.
No, even how it's worded, it just depends on discretion of those who creating an agenda, when I bring the form, if it's incorrect, then, or even for clarity, I should be notified, and then when I look at the agenda, it's too late then, and then nothing can be done.
Any other discussion?
So that's why I would like for us to mirror what tasks we have for the meeting notice.
Any other discussion?
So, uh, well, my question is, which I understand what you're saying, trustee Narciss, so would it be a way that you or I or anybody could maybe speak with someone prior to submitting maybe to see if we're wording it correctly?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be worded correctly.
Well, this time you, you asked me.
But I already had it worded.
Direct how to word those, so there was no issue with it being a discussion because you asked me ahead of time and I instructed you on how to write those. Um, so the que, I guess the, the answer would be yes, because I'm available to any of you that want to ask me about writing them, but basically it's consider and if appropriate, take action.
But.
So if you got those worked, no, they were not, no, sir, they were not, no, sir, they were not.
At this time, I like call for a roll call vote, Mrs. LeBlanc. To amend or to try to amend. Mrs. LeBlanc, roll call. No.
No.
Johnson.
I'm, you know what, I'm, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm really not clear on what, I, I don't know how that would work correctly, if I'm wrong, I don't, would I be able to recuse myself from the vote or something?
You can sustain.
Okay, well, I sustain, whatever. Because I'm not, I'm not clear on what I'm voting on for sure, so, and it may just be me, but, so I'm not voting for it.
Sustaining.
She's sustaining her vote.
Abstain.
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 No.
I'm so confused.
Uh, no.
Uh, re- repeat yourself.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion fails, let the record reflect that the motion fails. Mr. Getwood.
Yes, um, so I basically just wanted to, I put this on the agenda to find out more information on, uh, where are we now with, um, the backpacks, I know that we have been given, um, via donations, have we been keeping track of those and, um, exactly how many, how many have we collected total?
Well, Mr. Mah, Mr. Mahomes, we have to go through, because you have to go through your motion first.
Okay, my apologies.
Uh, you said, considering if appropriate approve a distribution method of clear backpacks purchased by district and donors given via, uh, community, corporations, organizations and partners.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narciss, a second by secretary, uh, Johnson, uh, discussion, Mr. Narciss, I mean, Mr. Getwood.
Okay, as I was saying, I was just, I wanted to get an update as to, um, where, where are we, um, with how many backpacks that we have received, um, either via donations or either what we have purchased, um, and then also just to get more information on how you all plan to distribute those, and then if we needed to purchase any more backpacks.
I have a question, uh, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, distribution would be an administrative matter, right? Whereas why, why we, why would a board take action on distribution methods?
Well, I, I.
That's the question.
That was worded wrong, that was worded incorrectly.
But that's what's in there.
I know, and that was on, on my end, thank you, but as I was saying, I wanted to find out more about the implementation process that you all will be putting, that you all will be doing, wasn't, it wasn't meant to be worded like that.
Yeah, because, because, well, so as, you could withdraw, I suppose, the.
You could, yeah.
Yeah.
There's been a motion and a second, so.
So we have to go.
You guys can discuss it and, and maybe explain, but I don't know that, that there's an item here for action.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but I will explain, I'll be happy to explain, and, uh, I want to thank our parents, our community for allowing us to do what we need to do in order to keep our students safe. What has, what we did was to, um, changed our policy to clear backpacks, and yes, it was done at a maybe inappropriate time, however, we work with our parents and we've given them until September fifteenth to purchase a clear backpack for every student. I want to thank the parents, the parents have been absolutely wonderful, the first day of school, we had about ninety, ninety percent of our students come with clear backpacks, and we have not received one call in opposition, because we know parents want their children safe. Um, we have approximately over, little over two thousand backpacks now, and we've, we've ordered some, uh, we had different companies to come in and, and donate clear backpacks, and it's really been phenomenal. What we will do, as we stated in the video and in correspondence, we would give our parents until September fifteenth to purchase a clear backpack. At that time, we will then distribute backpacks to schools based on the number of students that are in the schools and the need, and principals will determine along with their staff, their teachers, custodians who know of students that need pack, backpacks, and we understand that there are some parents who are strapped and we will help them as much as we can. At that point, our principals, along with their staff, will determine who will receive the clear backpacks.
And I'm assuming that's the, the, the distribution method.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so the principals administration campus would handle it.
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
Okay, okay.
So there's no action need to be taken on that item, if I'm mistaken, my, my, my turn.
I would, I would just do a roll call vote, I mean, not a roll call, just they, just they vote all in favor.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Hold on, hold on, let's make sure, okay, all in favor is to, is to agree to some distribution plan that you don't have.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so you need to vote accordingly, so yea means you're approving some distribution plan that you don't have, nay makes, just makes the motion go away.
Wouldn't it be, because there, there's already a plan put in place.
But you got a motion and a second on the floor.
We got a motion and a second.
But that's, that's what he just explained, correct?
But I'm saying what you're voting on is, this is, this is a distribution directed by the board.
By the, uh, by the.
There is none, there is nothing, so the, the vote is whether you're approving some distribution by the board that there is nothing of, or, or you're not, or you're just saying we're going with the administration, it's administration's job to, to distribute.
Let's be gonna vote, let's just roll call vote on this as well, Mrs. LeBlanc, because that's the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, just say, all in, all.
All is, all in favor.
Of the new distribution.
Distribution.
Proposed by the board, say aye.
By the board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Naye.
Well, we can't tell people to say aye and naye now, she said she already said aye and naye.
If you're saying yea, you're going with something that we don't have.
I'm letting them do that, that's not a board.
Okay, so that's.
Then you're saying no.
You saying no, okay. Motion, uh, fails. I'd like to call for adjournment of this meeting at seven fifty-two P M, I have a motion, and can I get a second?
Second.
Second, meeting adjourned, thank you.